Good afternoon, everybody. This is Committee on Education. Today's date is the 16th of March. We are in Conference Room 3009. We have about 12 bills on the agenda today. Pretty straightforward, so let's just go ahead and get started. First up, we have SB 830, SD2. This is with regards to emergency medical response teams and the Department of Education. First up, we have, I assume, is the DOE.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. Kurt Otoguro, Deputy Superintendent for the Department of Education, testifying on behalf of our Superintendent Kitayashi. You have our written testimony in front of you. The department offers written comments. I want to just emphasize that the department is fully supportive of anything that we can do as a department to save lives, to keep our students safe, as well as our faculty, but we offer comments and are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Quick recess. Thank you so much for convening our two o'clock agenda. Next, we have Hawaii Association for Justice providing comments. Next, we have individual Amanda Luning, providing testimony and support in person.
Hey, folks. I think most of you know me by now. I don't know if not. My name is Amanda Luning. I am the parent that drafted this legislation after an incident with my son. You have my testimony over the course of this process thus far. I just want to emphasize that although there are some things in place, the necessity around the minutes matter piece is what I feel like is the most important thing and that there needs to be some sort of, honestly, legal requirement around making sure that every school has a plan to get someone there for critical medical emergencies within that three-minute timeframe in consideration of the unique sizes and staffings of the school. So whether it's the specifics of what's in this bill or not, I just, something needs to be added that is not already in place. And if that is not, again, as it is now, it has to happen. Just, I apologize for being the emotional parent about it, but it has to happen in some way, shape, or form. There has to be a way to get somebody there, and there has to be a plan, and it has to be required of every single school for there to be a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have several individual testifiers submitting written testimony all in support. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony on this bill, SB 830, SD2? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, please go ahead.
This question is for Amanda. Thank you. Actually, member Ebslin and I are new to the committee, so we have not encountered your testimony in the past, and I did read through it, and thank you for your advocacy. So, and as you were drafting this measure, what was your experience? And did you have any conversations or meetings with either the schools or the DOE? And kind of what, if you were able to share with us, what, if you encountered any challenges and as to why we now, you know, had to work through, have to work through this measure?
Thank you. That's an excellent question. I spent a lot of time consulting with a lot of people, and I went through every chain of command up to the lovely folks that are right here, including their safety director, to figure out what kind of was happening or what was already in place. I consulted with three other states. I consulted with public health nurses. I consulted with the Department of Health. Anyone that would talk to me basically and answer the phone about what would need to be in place to make this feasible for, you know, the unique needs of every school, because every school has different sizes and all those types of things. And so what I drafted into the bill was with a lot of consult from existing emergency teams. There's only 18 of 32 states that have anything like this currently in place, and a lot of them are as a result of deaths in school systems that essentially could have been prevented and lawsuits associated with those things. So I did spend a lot of time with the language that was drafted. And again, I don't think it's perfect. I'm sure that it can be amended in some way, shape, or form, but the elements that I included in my testimony are what I really think are the important, absolute, like, no-give pieces. And again, the language could be vague enough that each school could figure out how to do that, but the communication mechanism for activation is how does somebody know if they need to get there? And if we don't want to go ahead and do the training every single teacher, which I think is fair, then there has to be a way to get somebody there.
So it's my understanding that in the, this committee had heard the House bill and has made the necessary amendments, and from what I'm hearing from you is your focus would really be on the communication piece and letting parents from the community know what each school-specific response is. So you would be okay with the amendments?
Not the previous amendments, communication methodology within the school. Like, how do you press a button and make sure somebody gets here? So how do you get on a walkie-talkie? How do you do a P A system? How do you get somebody there? The incident with my son involved a school that has almost 2,000 kids on that campus. And if they had followed the procedures as they had existed, a person would have not gotten there in time. And that's what keeps me up at night, guys. I got to be honest. And so when I went through the entire chain and everybody said, "Yeah, drills would be good. Yeah, that would be a good idea. Yeah, that's totally something that we could do," all the way up until to the superintendent's office, they're the one that told me they needed legislation, because they couldn't get appropriation without legislation to make some of these things happen, to make it so that they could get maybe the P A system or they could get AEDs in place and where they needed to be. And so I have another job, guys. I'm on a paid lobbyist. This is, this is something that I feel like it's almost like making a wrong right. It's something that should have existed already.
Mahalo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to the next bill. We have SB 1044, SD2. This is with regards to behavioral health specialists for our rural public schools. First up, we have Department of Education providing testimony and support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Annie Kalamah, Office of Student Support Services Assistant Superintendent, offering testimony on behalf of the superintendent. The department stands on its written testimony in support of this bill. I do want to make it clear that this is not an administration bill. However, if funding is going to be considered for this bill, we would be requesting 14 positions for our rural complex areas for approximately $975,000. So thank you for allowing us to testify.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have Hawaii Association for School Psychologists providing comments. We have Opportunity Youth Action Hawaii in support. And we have testimonies from two individuals both in support. Anyone else wishing to testify? Thank you. Seeing none, members, any questions? I have a quick question for DOE. Thank you again for being here. Can you tell me, does the Department of Education have LBAs, at least one per each complex area currently?
There are. They're not necessarily assigned to each complex area, but each complex area has licensed behavior analysts that are available to them. We have both DOE LBAs and contracted LBAs.
And how does that differ from what this bill is asking for?
LBAs work exclusively on applied behavioral analysis and prescriptive programs that have been identified for particular students. Behavioral health specialists provide a gamut of services, starting with more universal supports for all students in preventing behavioral and mental health challenges, all the way to more intensive services where they provide individual counseling for some students.
So there is a need, even though you folks did not request this officially? Do you believe that there is a need?
We do have over 300 BHSs currently serving all of our schools. We do sometimes hear from our neighbor islands that they are challenged in accessing additional mental health services.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Seeing none, moving on to the next bill. We have SB 154, SD1, DOE, and meal subsidies. First up, we have DOE in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kurt Otoguro, Deputy Superintendent, testifying on behalf of Superintendent Hayashi. Thank you, thank you very much for this opportunity to testify. We stand on our written testimony in support with offering some comments. Feeding our students is a daunting task, over 100,000 a day. But we know that we need to do better. I think approximately 50% of our students currently eat school meals. The only challenge will be if we can afford that entire subsidy, and something that we'd like to work with the legislature on. Appreciate your opportunity to testify. Thanks.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have the State Council for Developmental Disabilities providing testimony and support. Thank you so much for being here. Next, we have EEL providing testimony and support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Jordina Ferrer with the Executive Office on Early Learning. We stand on our written testimony in support, and we defer to the Department of Education. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have OHA providing testimony and support, not present. And we have Hawaii Public Health Institute providing testimony and support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Nate Hicks here with Hawaii Public Health Institute. I want to stand on our written testimony and also highlight that food is definitely a part of the educational system, just like the teachers, just like the desks, just like the books. People can't, kids can't show up to school and eat, or kids can't show up to school and learn without a healthy breakfast, without a healthy lunch, just like we can't show up to work and do our jobs without eating as well. There are tons, thousands of students who show up to school without having eaten and don't eat all day, and the education system suffers as a result. I also want to point out that HB 540, which you folks passed earlier in this session, I think is a little more direct and clear, saying that all breakfasts and lunches are going to be free for all students, while this one says that lunches are just going to be receiving some subsidy, and that dollar amount isn't really clear. Is it going to be free for everybody as a result? And I would hope that the bill that ends up passing is more similar to HB 540. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Next, we have HSTA providing testimony in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Laverne Moore speaking on behalf of Osetoui Junior, President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. The Hawaii State Teachers Association supports this legislation. We stand on our written testimony, and I would like to also give personal, my, I brought this up to my students in the classroom and asked them, "What do you think about having free breakfast and lunch?" And they say, "Do you know what? They gave it to us during COVID. Why do they take it away now? You know, our parents are having a hard time. So you go there, Ms. Moore, and you tell them, 'We need it for next year. That helps us to do a better job in school.'" So I'm telling you what my students are saying. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing. Next, we have Hawaii Appleseed providing testimony and support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm actually on Zoom today. Thanks for having me. Thank you for hearing this measure. We stand on our testimony and support. We do offer a couple of suggested amendments. The, some other, several other states are considering similar legislation, I think prompted by this, the waivers that allowed free meals for all students during the pandemic. So this is definitely a tidal wave that's happening nationwide. We've noticed that in other states, there is language in these bills. It's requiring participating school food authorities to maximize federal reimbursements. The USDA has a few provisions that are optional that schools can opt into. So we have some suggested language that might actually minimize costs to the state that would ensure that those schools are taking advantage of that. We echo Hawaii Public Health Institute that we think that including breakfast is important, trying to get more participation in school breakfast, just to make sure that we're getting kids as much access to healthy food as possible before they start their school day. The other thing I wanted to note is that I think right now the funds are going to the DOE, and it's not specified where. The Hawaii Child Nutrition Programs Office actually oversees not just the public schools in the state, but also all of the private, the independent and public charter schools. So we think it would be helpful if we could appropriate the funds directly to that office to make sure that all students are able to access this program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have HKN Speaks in support, not present. We have Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action in support. Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus providing testimony and support. Hawaii Hunger Action Network in support. Hawaii Foreign Unions United in support. And testimony from three individuals, all in support. Is James Labrie here? No, please take your time. Oh, good job, good job.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee. My name is James Labrie. I'm here to testify on Bill 154, which is to provide lunches free and reduce lunches to kids in the DOE system. I basically am testifying on that because I was a student in the DOE system that didn't have money in my lunch account, and I was told that because I didn't have lunch, because I didn't have lunch money in my account, I was not able to eat due to, due to not having lunch money in my account. But my thing is, what happens if, what happens if people or students or parents are not able to afford or are not able to check their kid's lunch account because of being too busy? My thing is, we can't, we can't go ahead and, we got to provide a way for them to eat even without the account, even if they don't have money, because I feel like if they, if we don't need, it's gonna make our energy low and also maybe cause even hospitalization, even ulcer. So that's one important thing to me. And also, I'm also testifying due to that experience, because I've been in foster care for the past 27 years. So I'm a very supportive testifier on this bill, and I highly encourage you all to please pass this bill. And from there, I will be in support for you guys to pass this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony on SB 154, SD1? Seeing none, members. Please state your name and your affiliate.
Aloha, Akayaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Education Committee. Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES. So the National School Lunch Program is a federally assisted meal program for schools, and it provides daily low-cost or free balanced meals to children from a certain income. And so in doing so, it kind of creates equity, especially for the impoverished families and perhaps those who suffer from socioeconomic factors and, such as disabled people, so that it can be a more equitable, it can create a more equitable level of lunch programming for them. And I just want to testify to say that this is a very good measure to help out a lot of the communities that suffer from not getting enough resources. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And we don't have your testimony, so if you can please submit it to the clerk, if you're able to. Thank you. Any other testifiers? Seeing none, members, any questions? Rep. Manoshi.
Yeah, this is for DOE. Maybe Randy. Up to you guys, who you want to send. So I have a, I submitted a similar bill, though, for free breakfasts and lunches on the House side. Not a companion bill to this one. This was another method to do what I think is about the same thing. But during the House hearing for my bill, DOE had testified that the amount of money that DOE takes in for school lunches every month is about eighty thousand dollars a month. Judging by your testimony here, you're saying that DOE needs about eighteen million dollars for the school year, which breaks down to about 1.5 million a month, which is twenty times that amount. I'm just wondering where this discrepancy lies.
Well, as you, thank you for the question, Representative. You know, it's, most of the money that we get is reimbursable from the federal government. So we do submit to the HCMB organization, and so they certify, they audit. And then, so they will reimburse based on the criteria that we meet, based on the nutrition of the meals. So much of that comes from the federal reimbursement subsidy.
So how much does the DOE take in from student meals, breakfast and lunch, every month?
Yeah. I do know that the cost has increased. It, it's about nine dollars. We'd spend about nine dollars per meal for lunch, about half of that for breakfast, but I don't know the actual dollar.
Subsidies. I'm just wondering how much money that the kids are paying you, because that's what the amount that we'd be covering, I think, is the state.
Good afternoon. The, in that previous hearing, I gave you the wrong number. It was missing a zero. So my apologies for that.
Okay, I went off that number, you know.
But I'm sorry, you're, the second question that you had.
So you're say, well, I guess I'll ask the question again. How much money, on, on, I mean, give me a ballpark. Does the DOE take in every month for, from students for lunches and breakfast? Or by year, you can say that, yeah, I mean.
Yeah. Rip, I would have to get back to you, but what I have been told is those cash sales that we get in from students that can't afford to, to pay for lunch was substantial and important for our startup funds at the beginning of the new school year because we have to output cash for purchases and things of that nature. So it's a significant part of the food program. And when COVID came in and the cash sales were not there, we had to draw upon some of the reserves that we had. We typically get for, from the cash sales. So it kind of put an imbalance to our operation, but we were able to, to work through that.
Yeah, and neither of our, my bill nor Senator Keith Agarwal's bill is asking you to do it for free. We just need to know how much
Okay.
money it is. And honestly, even, even at ten times the amount of eighty thousand, even at eight hundred thousand a month, you would still be at half of the eighteen million that you're requesting here. So I just, there seems to be a fairly large discrepancy. I'm trying to figure out why that is. If part of this is reimbursement, I'm not sure that the state should be fronting the money that you're going to get reimbursed anyway, unless you're planning on giving it back. So I'd like some more clarification on that when you, when you got.
Before the end, I will get to that, what that number is on the cash sales.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Sorry, just a follow-up, a follow-up question for Mr. Tanaka. How are, how are you calculating the demand if it's free? Is the assumption that everybody will want it? Are those the numbers you're using? Or are you using, you know, current numbers? Or how are you figuring that out?
Based on when, when we went into COVID and all the meals were free, there was not a substantial increase overall. What we saw increases were in the more disparate communities closer to the housing, closer to the low-income areas. But the overall threshold did not increase significantly. It's just where it increased.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members, any other questions? Quick question for A S Tanaka. Thank you again for being here. Do you know on the mainland, how many school districts provide free lunch for their students?
You know, it varies from state to state. And funny, I was on a, not funny, but timely. I was on a call this morning with the Council, the Council for Great City Schools. And there is a growing work towards free meals for, for a lot of the schools across. But they're trying to figure out the same thing. We're trying to figure out what that liability could mean or what that range could mean. And back to Rep. Martin's question is, how do we gauge demand? Right? It's a kind of, we're going to have to walk through this for a year at least to see where we are. The data we're pulling from is, is from during COVID. But there is a growing trend across the nation to provide free meals. The question is sustainable funding for it over the long, longer range. A lot of them are testing for like two years. They also mentioned this morning that the Biden administration is considering that on a national level, but no real substantive response yet. But there is a trend line going towards free meals.
Thank you for that. And when you say liability, you may, you're trying to ascertain as to how much produce you need?
Fundamentally, funding, funding to pay for the meals.
Funding, okay.
Yeah.
And how much reimbursement do you receive from the U.S. Department of Ed for your student meals?
Right now, about forty, oh, it's probably of the one twenty-five total in operating, about forty-five million, maybe a little more than that. And the numbers I quote you is pre, pre-COVID, because during the COVID period, it's kind of, it's a wash.
Okay. And has there been any thought given to providing free meals, free lunches for students before, in years past?
You know, I've been with the department only three years, and whatever data I've been able to, to pull, it, I can't find any significant movement in, in that area. I think the greatest concern is feeding those that cannot afford meals. Or it, it would be additional pressure for the families. And then that's those folks that are challenged economically. So I, you know, I think we've taken a position that it's a good thing. I've talked to teachers that said, you know, we want to, the hardest part we're having is with breakfast, and breakfast is, is an important part of the meal program. We'd like to get volume increase there. But it's, it's a moving target.
Thank you. I think, I think per Rep. Manoshi's comment, if we could figure out how much we need to appropriate, that'll be helpful because there seems to be willingness to, to take this proposal on in some form or fashion. Go ahead, Rip.
This question is for Hawaii Apple Seed. In your testimony, you provided a one-pager fact sheet on healthy school meals for all. And that fact sheet includes an estimate, an estimate on both the pre-pandemic as well as projected participation costs. Can you speak a little bit on the data that you have, as well as the assumptions you made in being able to put the numbers together? Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Daniella Spoto, Hawaii Apple Seed. We, we used twenty eighteen, nineteen participation data for that analysis. And that was the last full year of paid meals that we have to go off of. And we used a USDA analysis that found that schools participating in a provision called Community Eligibility Provision, which allows for universal free meals at a school with high enough eligibility, would see an increase in twelve point one percent participation in lunch. And, or, it's in the, it's in the one pager. I don't have it in front of me. But those numbers are based off of an average that other schools that are serving free meals were seeing nationwide. So we think it could be an approximate estimate of participation rate increase that we'd see here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Rep. Manoshi.
All right, I, DOE again. I wanted to follow up on one of Rep. Woodson's comments or questions. He asked about federal subsidies. I understand that, and I've been trying to work with Senator Schatz's office, too, to get an increase in the USDA subsidy for Hawaii. And recently, I think that, recently he got it. So I'm wondering what the increase in, I thought it was around eight million, but do you have a more specific number for us?
We asked that question. We have to work with our federal contingency to get that specific number. I know that there was a big number that was announced, eighty million or something of that nature. But we don't have a specific breakdown as to how it would have pertained to the DOE specific reimbursements at this time.
When, when about would you get that increase? And is it retroactive?
It's not retroactive.
Okay. When, when do you expect to get that?
Um, I, you know, I don't know. We, we just got that notice several months ago. So we need, we need to work with them to understand how that applies to our current program and what qualifications there are to, to, in order to receive some of that fund, additional funding, incremental funding.
Okay, my, my understanding of it is that it, there are not going to be any more. I mean, there will be more studies later. The reason I'm asking you this is because this eighteen million dollar price tag might be reduced by eight or nine million, depending on if further federal subsidies come in. Is that correct?
Uh, we're hopeful that it won't. We're hopeful that whatever we are, that we do receive is based on the numbers that we're submitting. Has nothing to do with the amount of funding available, unless they're going to increase that subsidy.
So in order to make school lunches free, if you're getting another eight million dollars in subsidies, and you're saying that it would take eighteen million to make it free, then that would take ten, right?
That, that's the assignment that we have. We got to determine that incremental fifty percent that, that are students that are not eating lunch. How many would actually go about doing that if, if it was free? There are some that, you know, we subsidize lunches as well. So it's, it's just a number that we need to find out. A S Tanaka just found out in answer to your question priorly, we collect in revenues approximately 1.8 million every month for the ten months that schools in session today. And then that, that amount is then, we would submit our, our request back to get the federal funding reimbursements, a portion of it.
Okay. Please keep in contact about the increased federal subsidies, because I understand that this is one step, and then further studies are going to be needed, and they may raise it again when, when a longer-term study is done. But it, it, I think that is going to directly affect the price tag of both this bill and my bill. So I'm very interested in that.
Okay. What, what we'll also do is put some clarity on the cost escalations that we've seen, which is also throwing a monkey wrench into our projections, since we, we experienced probably a forty-two percent increase in certain categories of food. So it's, it's not a one specific number that we can just forecast. So we'll, we'll do a better job at communicating that with you, sir.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rep. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to the next bill. SB 971, SD 2, DOE, and bus pass data collection. First up, we have the Department of Education, providing testimony and support.
It's me again. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Kurt Otoguro, Deputy Superintendent, testifying on behalf of our Superintendent Keith Ayashi. Department stands on the written testimony in support of this and offering comments. We're excited by this bill. We're excited by the opportunities that the counties have reached out to us, specifically Sidney County of Honolulu, to see what we can do to continue the subsidy of bus passes and expansion and promotion of public transportation on Oahu specifically. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Next, we have Charter School Commission, providing testimony and support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee, Yvonne Lau, on behalf of the Charter School Commission. We stand on our written testimony and support, and thank you very much for including our charter schools. And we stand ready to work with the department should this bill pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have AG's office, providing comments via Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Martin, Members of the Committee, Anne Horiuchi from the Department of the Attorney General. As we set forth in our testimony, we thought there might need to be some clarification that this applies to charter high school students and not all charter school students. So we've suggested some language in our testimony. Also, it's our understanding that really the DOE is not responsible for the provision of bus transportation for individual charter schools and their students. It's up to the individual charter schools to decide whether and to what extent they'll provide transportation to and from a student's home and the charter school. And for those reasons, we're suggesting in our testimony that the Charter School Commission be involved in the collection of the data that's referenced in the bill and that a separate appropriation be made to the commission in order to offer bus passes to charter high school students. So that's in our testimony, and I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have the State of Hawaii Climate Change Mitigation and Adaption, Adetach, excuse me, Adet, goodness, Adaptation Commission in support. Not here. Okay, next, we have Sidney County of Honolulu DTS, providing testimony and support. We have Ulupuno Initiative, providing testimony and support. We had Democratic Party Hawaii Education Caucus in support. And we have two individuals, both as support, one on Zoom.
Not present.
Not present. Okay, that's all I have. Anyone else? Oh, please go ahead. Please go back.
Aloha Akayaka Chair, Vice Chair, and the Education Committee, Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES, in strong support. So in the research of the measure, it says fifty percent shortage of bus drivers led to transportation disruptions for two thousand students. And nobody wants to drive the bus, and so the labor pool doesn't have much to pull from. And so the purpose of this act is to gather data on the city pass for students for public schools. And it appropriates funds to the DOE to offer transportation for the students. And so we just wanted to comment, we want to provide a comment that, you know, perhaps the measure could consider a collaborative working group. So, you know, to list various agencies involved, especially because it's trying to collaborate with the city. Currently, this measure is just delegating a task to DOE. I think it would be helpful if you could create a list of potential partners and then also include county DTS to be included in it. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. If you can submit your testimony, please. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony on this bill? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, moving on to the next bill. We have SB 1518, SD 2, DOE and procurement. First up, we have DOE in support.
Aloha Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Martin, Members of the Committee, Keith Ayashi, Superintendent, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The Department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for being here, too. Thank you. We also have testimony from SPL, providing testimony and opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Bonnie Calcoy for the State Procurement Office. We are in strong opposition to this bill, and we are standing on a written testimony. I would like to emphasize a couple of things. Should this bill pass, there will be no open competition, no transparency, no accountability, opens door, open the doors for parcelling and other procurement irregularities. All the while, there is exemptions in the statute and laws that provide for some of the exemptions that the DOE is already requesting. Thank you. Available for questions.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else per this bill? Seeing none, members, any questions? Rep. Manoshi.
Yeah, I'll try to keep this brief since it's going to come to the committee next. But Bonnie, would you mind, say procurement?
Yes, good afternoon.
So I'm a little concerned that this seems to be requiring three contracts per bid. Is that, is that correct?
No, it's requiring three quotes.
Three quotes?
For, you know, basically three quotes for any contract that will be let out.
Okay. Is, under this bill, from your understanding of it, are other procurement methods allowed, or do they need to get three quotes up to?
From what I understand, if they're going to use a small method purchase of procurement, they have to get, depending on the dollar level, they have to get up to three quote, three written quotes. And so there's a couple of parts to this bill. The first part is they don't have to use electronic procurement, which we are concerned about as well because of the transparency and just getting three quotes from whomever they choose to, to get from. And then the other part of the bill is also exempting them completely from the code for certain kinds of educational materials, which would be, there's, there's a list in here for, you know, different kinds of educational learning materials, including laptops and computers and supplies. And so when you think about it, anything can be related to education. So, you know, your pencil. So, you know, your pencils, your papers. Are we now seeing all of that is out the door and they can procure which, whatever method they choose to use, which includes not doing any kind of procurement?
And what about the indefinite contracts for, I mean, I always use gutters as an example or maybe roof repairs. Would they still need to get three quotes every time they, they do that? Because normally you have a contract with one kind of entity and you just go for it, right?
Okay, there, I know there is a contract or a solicitation going out, if not already soon, a job order contract, job order contracting. So the, it'll be competitively procured. It'll be a list of vendors from which the agencies can then solicit, depending on, I think, again, it's a dollar level, how many quotes you need to have. And then it's, it's kind of like a mini IFB after that, but it won't have the full blown IFB or RFP process. So they'll still have to get some quotes of some kind. And that's another opportunity that the schools will have to use the JOC instead of trying to procure on their own getting three quotes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Members, any other questions? I have a quick question for DOE. Thank you, Sue, for being here. I, I know that some of your contracts are already sole source like laptops that was mentioned before due to supply chain issues. But can you go into some of the rationale as to why you think this would be a good bill to pass?
Thank you, Chair. Most definitely. The, currently, the small purchase contract for supplies is capped at twenty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-five thousand dollars and above, school principals would then need to go off for procurement. And a lot of times that process takes at least six months for us to get our equipment and equipment that we need to help ensure that our students are prepared. Especially now that we're working to get our students ready for industry and workforce. We need to be able to get those equipment into the schools. Authentic equipment that I've been utilizing in industry that our students can learn from and work on. And getting that, that type of equipment definitely is above twenty-five, the current twenty-five thousand dollar threshold. So that, that's one important area. The other one relates to construction. And Randy O'Kray, do you guys want to share about the construction process of the two hundred fifty thousand dollar? How that would impact? Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, so procurement under this, we, job order contracting is one of the processes that we've gotten passed and you're all familiar with that JOC program. We're using it to build out the preschools right now. So it's a very repetitive type of thing. And so we bid it out, they're vetted contractors. We select, they're on it. And so that's how we're able to manage through the procurement process a little bit quicker to get a quicker result. So as a result, as an example for JOC, for preschools, we'll get eleven, approximately eleven classrooms renovated and those are very simple tasks by August. So you can see that there's a difference when you have certain procurements. But JOC is just for procurement, is not for goods and services.
And if you can kind of explain what, for those who do not know what, what the JOC system is and how you would leverage those same processes as it relates to this particular bill.
Right, that's a good, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. So, you know, job order contracting, the terminology, the acronym is JOC, is really just another procurement tool that the state of DOE in particular uses for repetitive type jobs. So as you can imagine, if we're going to build a new school, then the JOC program absolutely doesn't fit in that procurement. And we will follow the normal state procurement laws, RFPs, the whole nine yards. When it comes to a renovation of a classroom, re-roofing, re-carpeting, you know, whatever, whatever those repetitive things is, because we have forty-two hundred buildings that are basically the same, we believe that the contractors who are vetted prior to that and they're, they make the list to be compliant and we have certain SLAs that they need to meet, that in those particular cases, the JOC program and vetted vendors or contractors and their subs can do the job a lot quicker, they're more familiar and it's better use of state funding from a timing standpoint. And like Superintendent says, we can react a lot quicker. And, and that's really primarily the difference between our normal procurement. And that's why other state agencies don't necessarily are conducive to JOC because every building in the state is different. But in the school situation, a classroom is pretty much the same. Restrooms are pretty much the same. On occasion, we'll find that JOC does not fit. But in the case of, as I gave the example for preschools, that's a very good example of we have existing pre, classrooms that need to be renovated to the same specification, preschool specifications. And so therefore the JOC program matches perfectly.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chair.
Sorry, one more question. So if you have somebody that you've vetted and you're continually hiring them, how do you make sure they're not increasing their prices? Because they know they have that, they know, they have your business and that they're not inflating their prices. What kind of control is there?
These vendors are, thank you for that question and that's a good one. We're very cognizant of increasing costs, obviously. And just because you're on the list doesn't mean you get to stay on the list. And so under Randy, ASANAKA's operation, they're constantly reviewing those vendors on a periodic basis to make sure that one bid that they provide is fair and two, did they deliver on time within that budget? Or are we seeing extraordinary things that didn't come out? And so far, the JOC program has proven to be well. We have not seen that. But you're right, we need to keep a constant eye on to make sure that cost escalations don't creep up just because they're on the list.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members, any other questions? Thank you so much. Seeing none, moving on to the next bill. We have SB seven, this is SFA. This is really just a housekeeping proposal. First up, we have SFA Director in support, Mr. Fuji.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Scott Fuji, Administrative Services Officer on behalf of our Executive Director, Chad Kiony-Farias. We stand on our testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have. Anyone else on this bill? SB seven, seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, going on to the next bill. We have SB five three one, SD two. This is with regards to the SFA and appointment positions. First up, we have individual testimony from Mr. Silva in opposition and individual testimony and support from Mr. Ashima. Anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to the next bill. SB one zero seven, SD one. This is with regards to the Board of Education and Operations. First up, we have BOE providing comments. I don't see anyone here. We have individual testimony from two people, one in opposition and one in support. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony on SB one zero seven, SD one? Seeing none, members, questions? Okay. They're not here. Dang it, anyone that happens, okay. Okay, seeing no questions, moving on to the next bill. SB one five six, SD one, Board of Education and Community Forums. We've heard this bill several times, several times. First up, we have Office of Information Practices providing testimony and support. We have lay testimony from BOE offering comments. And one individual, Mr. Gee, providing testimony and support, available via Zoom.
Mahalo, Chair Woodson and Vice Chair Martin. Hello, my name is Eric Pomaike E.G. and I'm a junior at Calikey High School on the Big Island of Hawaii. I'm an active community member and also a member of the Hawaii State Youth Commission and I'm here today in support of Senate Bill one fifty-six. As a student that attends a Title I school, I cannot describe the urgency and frustration in public high schools. Students, staff and community members are not getting their voice heard in their districts. With most families not having access to technology, they aren't aware of BOE forums and they don't have the resources to travel to Oahu for meetings. This bill doesn't just give them written notification of meetings, it also makes sure that neighbor island citizens like myself are able to have their voice heard in person without needing to travel off island. There is a difference between cooperation and collaboration. Cooperation is about working together to achieve your own goals. While collaboration, on the other hand, is about working together to produce a mutual goal. By implementing this bill, we can have statewide collaboration by making sure each county is represented. We can create change that won't just affect the lives of students of one county, but rather the entire state. Thank you so much for allowing me to testify today and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have from a student's perspective. Mahalo.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Testifying on spring break. That's dedication. That's all I have on my list. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony on this bill? Seeing none, members, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, please go ahead.
Sorry, is OIP here?
I think they are, they are not here.
Okay, that's good. Sure. Yeah, well, I guess maybe, Chair, you said you've heard this bill before. I guess what, what's, I understand the sunshine law would limit all board members from attending one of these. The BOE's testimony recommended removing the requirement that less than a quorum attend. Has OIP copined on why they believe less than a quorum should be there? Or what the rationale for that? If, if there's already some limit waivers for the sunshine law for this to occur, why not allow all board members to attend?
Well, it's not common practice, but I'll go ahead and answer the question. There, there.
Just to give me thought of.
Sure, if there is disagreement as to whether or not what you refer to is actually the case.
Okay.
And so this bill seems to get stuck every single year around some of those questions.
Okay.
Members, any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to the last bill of the day. We have SB one zero two two. This is with regards to the Early Learning Board and its composition. First up, we have EOLB providing comments in person, Chair Peters.
Good afternoon, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Martin and members of the committee. Thank you for this opportunity to offer comments on SB ten twenty-two relating to the Early Learning Board. The Early Learning Board is offering comments on SB ten twenty-two, specifically amendments designed to increase the effectiveness of the board governance and to recognize the importance of county representatives as the EOEL complies with its statutory obligations to build out a statewide system. At the same time, the board wishes to recognize the value inherent in the diversity of stakeholder voices that are reflected in the current board organization. We are offering amendments to the composition, first of all. We would reduce the number of county members to four, one from each of the counties and the two remaining open positions that would result from that original six as voting members from the counties. We would recommend one be a Hawaiian medium education voting member to reflect our state's dual language as two official languages and one be a pediatrician with a child development focus to provide an emphasis upon health and safety and policy decision-making looking at the whole child and not just a portion of that child. We would stay, stick with the total of nine voting members by supporting the three at-large members. The non-voting members, we would not make any changes to. We would suggest one addition to the, this portion of the bill and that's the creation by the Board of an Early Learning Stakeholders Advisory Council, which would meet four times a year to advise the Board and to also provide members to serve on subcommittees. With regards to the qualifications amendments are suggested, some are language changes to better reflect the qualifications to address early care and learning governance and system building. And we would add one in the ideal qualification section to identify areas of expertise that could most benefit and support the development of an early learning system by looking at particular professional expertise, the content of which could be brought to the Board, adding to its ability to make good decisions. And one final comment, the Early Learning Board recommends the effective date taken into consideration adequate time for the current Board to transition based upon the propositions in the bill. Thank you and I'm happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Thank you, Dr. Peters. That's all I have on my list. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Or actually, I have two more. We have individual testimony from Elaine Yamashita in support and testimony from Terry Locke also in support. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony, please come up.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and the Education Committee, Angela Melody Young testifying in strong support on behalf of CARES. So from the Executive Office on Early Learning, the past decade has seen an increase in public investment in early learning programs by federal, state and local governments, particularly for economically disadvantaged children. More than eighty-five percent of brain development occurs from birth to age five. Enrolling your child in a, enrolling children in a school readiness program prepares them to learn cognitively, linguistically, socially and emotionally and also physically. It will give the children the experiences they'd need sharing with others, waiting one's turn, communicating, working with a partner and becoming a confident, independent individual to succeed in kindergarten and beyond. Early learning is important to the community as well. Studies show that children who have been given school readiness opportunities are more likely to grow into healthy, capable and then to grow up into adults who contribute positively to society. So, you know, because it can be reasonably concluded then that we should be supportive of this bill and any of the other efforts and initiatives relating to early learning. And recently from the State of the City address, they announced that there's going to be the newest department at the city, Early Childhood Development Department, I think. Yeah, that's what it is, Early Childhood Department. So, yep, thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much. Any others who would like to testify on this bill? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Seeing none, quick recess.